Okay, we're gonna come to over there. Today is the Wednesday, April 2nd, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Manuckian.
Here.
Commissioner DeRoe.
Here.
Here.
Could I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on or before Wednesday, March 26, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before we move on with the regular business, I do want to say that in memory of one of our fellow commissioners' wives, Mr. Lee Torgeson, I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in her memory. Please remind me as we approach that, make that statement again. Approval of the minutes for the March 19th meeting? Comments or corrections to be made?
We approve the minute. That's written? Support?
A motion support. Please call roll for approval of the minutes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yes.
Commissioner DeRoe.
Abstain.
Commissioner Manuckian.
Aye.
And Chair Manuckian.
Aye. On a vote of three to oh with one abstention, the approval of minutes has been made for the meeting of March 19th. Agenda item five is oral communications. We have none. We're moving on to agenda item six A, which is an appeal. It's PVAR 2007-016. Its location is 1240 South Glendale Avenue, also known as the Karun Restaurant. It's a request to appeal the zoning administrator's denial of the appellant's request for variance to approve the outdoor barbecue. We have both a motion to approve and a motion to deny. The applicant is Sam Artonian. Staff is represented by Chris Baxter. And I have a statement to make before we enter into that as far as the process. So this next item is an appeal from the decision, the zoning administrator or the zoning hearing officer. It's heard as a de novo hearing. Testimony given at the zoning administrator's hearing should be repeated because the commission does not review the tapes of those meetings. Decisions rendered today will be based on the evidence presented at this hearing and the evidence in the file, including appeal documents, staff reports, and letters received. Individuals speaking today should therefore present all the evidence which they may wish this commission to consider. A handout describing the appeals process is available at the front counter. Appeal items are considered as public hearings. The commission will consider testimony from the appellant, applicant, staff, and any member of the public wishing to speak. If you wish to speak, please fill out a card and present it to the recording secretary. All right. That said, Mr. Baxter, would you give us a... Oh, I'm sorry. I guess it would be Mr. Baxter giving us the overview.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, directly behind you on the board, you have a site plan, floor plans, photographs, and a location zoning map. The proposed project, as you mentioned, at 1240 South Glendale is a very large shopping center. It's about a four-acre site. It's located... There are three zones. If you look on the zoning map on the left side there, you have a C1 zone, which interfaces with Glendale Avenue to the west. And then on the backside of the property, which also touches Mariposa Road to the east, you have an R2250 with the parking overlay zone. That area toward the back, as you can see at the top of the site plan at the top of the pages, excuse me, at the top of the site plan is all parking, or the parking overlay is. The subject property is on the left side of the site plan. You can probably see a little yellow highlighted area, cloud area. And then on the floor plan is the upper right-hand plans. You can see the area up there as well. Now, the subject of today's conversation is going to be the barbecue grill at the very back. And on the floor plan, you can see where it's highlighted on the floor plan. That's the barbecue area. And then you can see photographs of it. The photographs, we have different timeframes. We can see the shopping center on the photographs on the bottom right. And you can see some recent photographs taken by the fire department, which are the lower ones. And then the uppermost ones are photographs by the applicant showing the barbecue grill there. See, do we have anything on the... Then you can also see, we have, if you look on our screen over here, you can get a view of sort of the overall site. The Karun Restaurant would be... Let's see. Let me see that little cursor over here. Right here.
Be careful.
Let's see. Where's that? How's that? Same word. I just want to go right here. How do I do that? Okay, where that cursor is right there, that's where the Karun Restaurant is located. And that part of the shopping center. And off to the left is where Glendale Avenue is. Okay, real quickly, what I want to go through the chronology, what I'm gonna try to do is hit it real light. I gave you a very long chronology. 1980, a restaurant, 1,500 square foot restaurant, was opened up at this location. And then in 1989, nine years later, it was expanded to 3,400 square feet. And in 1996, the current applicant, or the appellant, became the owner of the restaurant. In 1999, that's when the building and safety staff first went out and cited the applicant for the outdoor barbecue and told him to remove it because they didn't have a permit. And in 99, the Board of Zoning Adjustments overturned over the denial of a case for selling of alcohol, public dancing, and live entertainment. They allowed it, in other words. It had been denied, but they, on an appeal, they decided to allow the alcoholic beverages, public dancing, entertainment. At that point, only public, only alcohol sales was allowed. And in year 2000, and this is where, right now, it's a bit interesting, if you looked up at the plan up here, let me just come up to the board of the question. We have a series of stamps, and this is some of the conversation that people have had about this particular plan. We have in the year 2000, we have a stamp by the health department, by the zoning administrator, and then 2004 by the fire department. That's the plan that the applicant has been referring to, some of his appeal information and his original variance request.
Excuse me. When did you say the stamp from building and safety was?
Well, there is none. That's the point of the...
Well, there's a building safety note on the left corner there that... It's a stamp that basically reads, "Before a building permit issued."
Well, there was no... There's no official building and safety stamp on...
It's on fire prevention.
It's on the bottom one. That one, what is it?
Health, county health.
This one.
County health. That's county health.
Before starting construction, the building permit must be taken from your building and safety department. What was that stamp?
Well, that's a... That's not us. That's not a city stamp. So there was no city building department stamp on the plan.
What stamp is it then?
I don't know. You think you could talk to the applicant about that?
Yeah.
I can tell you the stamps that have signatures on them. But I can't vouch for something that's just a note on the plan. So then we have... So in that chronology, which I pointed out, that goes down through this area here. In the year 2005, the building and safety section referred this case over to Neighborhood Services for further code enforcement at that time. The code enforcement, they continued on, and then there was a lull in this while the city council was discussing the outdoor grill ordinance, but it failed in October 2006. And that same year, 2006, Neighborhood Services requested that the city attorney open the case again. And in July 2007, the applicant request for a variance to allow the outdoor grill was denied, and in August, it was appealed. And the reason it's taken so long from August to now is because of the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's kind of been changes there, and so now you are hearing the case. If we look down at the analysis, we have three parts to it. We have the zoning administrator, sort of a summary of her decision. It's kind of a repeating, basically stating that there is... Weren't able to make a finding to demonstrate a land use hardship of any sort or any exceptional or unique land use circumstances. There was also the findings also stated that there was a detrimental or injurious finding could be made, and that also it set a precedent for other outdoor grills. And that allowing the outdoor grill to continue would be inconsistent with the city's intention to eliminate such uses. So that was the overall view of the zoning administrator's decision. The arguments expressed by the appellant, saying that why he should be allowed is that he felt that the decision refused to consider all the facts, that the outdoor grill was in compliance with the site and floor plans approved by the planning department, fire department, and the LA County Health Department. He says that nothing was taken into consideration about a permit services center staff, person who said he did not need a building permit to operate. And then the last section is our staff analysis. Much of the staff analysis is just a summary of the chronology, but at the very end, we do have a couple of points that we make where we show that where the planning department did approve the plan in 2000 and the fire prevention in the year 2004, but we want to make a comment that that is a partial approval. The applicant never followed through from 1999 to the year 2009 to get a building permit. And the record will show that both the building and safety department and the Neighborhood Services Department made repeated requests to work with the applicant over that period of time to get him to comply, but nothing was ever done. When the applicant was asked specifically who he talked to, when he talked to, about why he didn't need a building permit, all we were told is that there was somebody in the building and safety section who told him he did not need it. He didn't know exactly when or who this person was. And also, when I spoke with both the building and safety staff and the Neighborhood Services staff, I asked, "Do you recall any comments from the applicant where he was following up on this issue?" He said, "Never." Building and safety staff, I spoke with them this morning, the actual building inspector, and he said, "I worked with the applicant for years on this, and I thought we were going to try to get something accomplished, but nothing was ever accomplished." So the city has made an effort the entire time to get the applicant to comply by getting a building permit for over a nine-year period, and nothing's ever been done. And so what we say in our last paragraph down here is that in that section 30.12.040, the zoning code, which is the same language, has been affected since 1986, basically says that all uses shall be conducted entirely within a closed building attached to a permanent foundation. And we're saying that we shouldn't have issued that stamp in 2000. Now, the applicant never acted upon it all these years. And so we're saying the city is not stopped from correcting this error. After nine years, the applicant never made a response to it. And so we're saying that the appellant did not rely on city approvals to construct a grill either, and they constructed it over a year and a half prior to the zoning approval stamp. So that pretty much is a quick overview, summary of the staff report, and our recommendation is to sustain the zoning administrator's denial. And then we have the other two motions. Should the commission want to either sustain the denial or rule otherwise?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Do we have any initial questions from the commission?
I was wondering if the commission should choose to deny the appeal, is there anything to prevent the applicant or the appellant, in this case, to go through the process whereby they could construct a grill which falls within the four corners of the Glendale Municipal Code?
Yes, inside the building, yes.
So they can do it? Just out of the economics of it?
Yes, it has to comply with the code, is that it can't be outdoors.
Any other questions at this time?
Right. I know that the planning commission acted, had a public hearing regarding outdoor grilling, and that's not included in your summary. What date do you have a date on that or approximately?
I don't have... I just put... The only thing I put in was in October 17th of 2006, the grilling ordinance failed to be adopted by the council.
Adopted by the city council, but so our action was a couple of weeks before or something?
You were before that.
It's not included in here, by the way.
That's correct. Well, what I was trying to do is, you'll notice, this was a fairly long chronology, and I didn't want to have every single... In fact, I cut out a lot of things just to try to give some conciseness to the... Give you some highlights and points.
The other question I have, Mr. Chair, if I could ask at this point, is has the applicant submitted any other options to the outdoor grilling?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. We have, at this point, it's time for the appellant to present their case. We have, I believe, I have two cards representing them from Vic Sessions and it looks like an Angela, and I cannot read the last name. If that's true, and you are working together, then you have 15 minutes to present your case? Is that an accurate understanding? All right, so you have up to 15 minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Angela Artonian. I'm the daughter of Mr. Artonian, the owner of Karun Restaurant. We're here before you to request that you consider our appeal of the zoning administrator's decision, which denied our application for outdoor grilling with the use of 20 feet 4 inches by 10 feet 6 inches barbecue pit. This is a 24.6 square foot pit. Let me just briefly go through the history of the case and all the efforts done by my father to comply and correct the situation. In 1996, my father applied for a certificate of use and occupancy prior to opening up the restaurant. So we operated the establishment. In 1999, we were issued a citation by the building and safety for installing a patio cover and the barbecue pit. We did not know we needed a permit for the small patio cover. However, we went ahead and removed the patio cover. My father then proceeded to get the necessary drawing prepared and made for the barbecue pit, and he also notified the building that we will be coming in to obtain the necessary approvals and the permit for the barbecue pit. Then he continued processing the plan. In 2000, since we are a restaurant, we were required to get approval from the LA County Department of Health and Services. We received an approval from them. We also got approval from the planning and zoning. These approvals are in the drawing. After obtaining these two approvals, my father went to a building and safety permit services center and inquired as to the other approvals and the permits needed. After showing his drawings to the lady, whose name he can't remember, she was in permit services center, and after she looked at the drawings, she asked specifically, "Do you have any electrical, mechanical, gas, or plumbing connection to this barbecue pit?" My father said, "No." Therefore, she said, "If none, you would not need any approvals from these trades." And also, she said, she doesn't think he needs any permit. My father walked away and thought, "Everything is okay." And that was it. In 2003, after three years, my father received another notice from the building and safety saying he has not corrected a violation for the barbecue pit. My father again went to permit services with the same drawing. At this time, he was told he needs to obtain fire department's approval. In 2004, my father got fire prevention approval, and he was told he needs to have some kind of water supply near the pit. Since directly behind the barbecue pit is the kitchen, he ran a hose from the inside faucet to the outside for water supply whenever and if ever the barbecue pit is being used. Fire prevention signature is also on the drawing. Again, he went back to the permit services center, showed the drawing, and asked what permit he needs to obtain. Again, he was told he does not need any permit. My father does not speak good English, but he tries to communicate as much as he can, and he can understand when somebody tells him, "You don't need a permit." He walked away thinking this case was done and over with. In 2005, he yet received another notice, this time it was from Neighborhood Services for an illegal barbecue pit. The same year, he also received a notice from the Neighborhood Services stating that this case has been referred to the city's attorney's office. My father went to the city attorney's office and was told that the city will hold off on any actions on this case, as the city council will be considering the issue soon. In 2006, my father received another letter from the Neighborhood Services saying that they will temporarily suspend the enforcement of this case because the city council is considering some changes on the backwind hall ordinance and outdoor grilling. Also, in 2006, my father was informed that the city attorney's office is closing the case pending city council's action. You can just imagine how happy he was, that this case is finally done, closed, and over with. However, the same year, he was again visited by the Neighborhood Services Code Enforcement Officer and was told to do something about this barbecue pit case. My father told the code enforcement officer that he thought this case had been closed and settled. He was told, "No," and that he has no other way or option but to obtain a variance for the pit or remove it. My father readily went to permit services and obtained the application packet for a variance, and in June 2007, he filed and submitted a variance application and paid the necessary fees. Unfortunately, this application was denied by the zoning administrator in July of 2007, and that is why we are here today, appealing this decision. From this history, you can see how much my father wanted and tried to get this case taken care of. He never stopped working on it, from the time he got the notice in 1999 up to today, April 2008. He has been almost... It has been almost nine years since he got the notice, removed the patio roof, had the drawings made, got approvals, went back and forth, was told the case will be closed, and finally, he is here before you tonight, and still, he does not know what to do. He is still trying to get approval for this 24.6 square foot barbecue pit. He wants you to know that he is still willing to do whatever is necessary to make this barbecue pit acceptable and to be able to get a permit. This barbecue pit is not the primary cooking facility for our growing barbecue in the restaurant. We have another small grill inside the kitchen, but from time to time, on special occasions, we grill with charcoal and believe that doing it outside is much safer and better. We could say that this grill is only used once or twice a month, similar to a residential barbecue grill, and we are willing to accept any conditions this commission may impose to limit its use and make it legal. My father tried hard. He has spent hours and hours trying to get approvals and to take out a permit. He still wants to get a permit as required. He has not received any complaints from any adjacent businesses or residential neighbors. This barbecue pit has not been materially detrimental to the public welfare, and it is tucked away and located at the rear of the building. It is very minimal in size and could very well be treated or looked as similar to those residential barbecue pits. In closing, we just want to repeat, we have been doing business in this location since 1996. We have a small business. My father is a simple businessman. He is a law-abiding citizen and would like to make his request for... This request work for the neighbors, the community, and the city. We are willing to do whatever is necessary to make the small barbecue pit acceptable to the city. Please reconsider our approval. Also, I would like to share with you that we have obtained signatures and approvals from adjacent businesses and local residents. And also, I would like to introduce you to Vic Sessions, who is a local resident, and would like to share some important information regarding the simplicity of my dad's operation. Thank you. Also, if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
I'm gonna let Mr. Sessions go, and then we will probably have questions for you, so, you know, stand close if you...
Chronologies are filed.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Hi, everybody. I'm Vic Sessions. I live, I reside here in Glendale, and I read the paper last summer about this incident, so I was curious, because I'm a competition barbecue cook, and I was curious what all the uproar was about barbecuing in Glendale. So I went by to see Sam. I've never met Sam before, and so I went by there to look at his operations, see what it was all about. As I was there, he explained to me that they do banquets there and, you know, once or twice a week. And I asked him, "How often does he barbecue outside?" And he said, "Maybe no times a month, maybe three times a month. It varies on and on." So I looked at his grill in the back, and it was six foot long and about 20 inches deep. And he was using lump charcoal. And I brought just an example, if y'all are interested, you can look at what the difference between that. Because I think if anybody here cooks with a charcoal grill in their backyard, it's usually a briquet. A briquet is compressed charcoal with chemicals in it, okay? So you and I probably, when we cook charcoal, we're using this briquet here. And the Karun Restaurant uses this very light lump charcoal. It's real charcoal, not the compressed charcoal. So what he's putting into the air with it... And I asked him, I said, "How often do you use the whole grill?" He said, "I usually use about half of it, because most of our parties are 40 to 60 people. And occasionally, it's 100. And then I would use the whole grill for that." And so what happens is, when you fire these up, this lump, it takes, both of them, it takes about 20 to 30 minutes to get the coals where there's no more smoke anymore. So after the first 20 minutes, there's no more smoke coming from either one of them. But this one here puts out about two to three times as much smoke as the lump does. And so what's happening is, when I turn on my... Or when I do my little 22 and 1/2 inch Weber kettle in the backyard, I'm putting out as much smoke as the Karun Restaurant is when they're doing a dinner for 50, 60 people. So the point is, is this is a really small operation, and the amount of smoke that goes out is no more than what I do in my backyard. And the only smoke that comes from the pit after everything turns to coals in 20 minutes is the meat drippings hitting the coals, and then that smoke goes up, just like you have at Burger King or Troy's or any place in town, except you see them putting out smoke all day long. So all he's doing is emitting about 1/3 the smoke in here, as he's probably emitting in this one. So it would take three of my barbecue... His one barbecue pit is equal to three Weber kettles. And you can imagine every weekend how many Weber kettles are working with this type of charcoal. And this is the nice one. Half the people that use this briquet are using the soaked briquet in kerosene, because they don't know how to light a fire. Just a lot of people, they're lazy, or they just don't know how to light a fire. So the reason I came here is that I thought, his operation, I can put out... I can put out... Two or three people like me can put out more smoke in the air than the Karun Restaurant puts out for a banquet. It's a very small operation, very simple, and very little. And I thought it was kind of a little outrageous. I didn't know what the whole thing was about, except it's a code. I understand it's a code. You have a code. But it's a very small, simple, little operation. Certainly, there, I would think there'd be something that could be done that doesn't cost somebody a lot of money. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
All right. At this time, I'm going to encourage my commissioners to ask questions to either one of the speakers that represent the appellant. It will be asking you some questions now.
Can I ask him a question?
Of course, yes.
While you're there, I'll ask you a question. I saw on the photograph...
Please remain behind the mic so we can hear the answer.
Some bags that were labeled Mesquite.
Yeah.
And is that pre-soaked?
No, no. None of the lump charcoals are pre-smoked. What they did was charcoal comes from burnt wood.
So soaked in water?
No, it comes from burnt wood. So they make the charcoal out of that. But it's not soaked in anything. Mesquite is the wood they used. Instead of oak, it's a mesquite wood.
Okay.
Yeah, it's burnt... It's true charcoal. It's lump. Very light. And if anyone of y'all want to feel the difference in the weight of a briquet versus a lump, the lump is about half the weight of a briquet.
And I guess you wouldn't know whether the same mesquite wood is used for the indoor barbecue. I guess she can answer that.
Gas, I believe.
Is it gas, the indoor barbecue's gas?
Gas. What is it inside?
It's gas.
Your fuel is gas inside?
Now, can you explain, what is the grill inside fired by?
I'm not an expert, so I...
I wasn't there, and I wasn't there to inspect...
Well, I'll tell you what. We'll table that for a second. During the other speakers, just find out, and you can address that during rebuttal. Okay? Because you'll have another few minutes.
I was there to inspect the indoor one. I was there to inspect, to look at the... I was curious about the...
I do have one more question. Chair for the lady, for Angela. When was the first time the barbecue was used outside, and when was the last time it was used?
I believe the first time was shortly after we opened the establishment.
Like in 96, and the last time?
I could not able to give you a date at this time. I couldn't find out.
Is it still in use?
Um...
Yeah.
It's still in use. But we do...
That's all I need. Thank you.
All right. Other questions from the commission for the speakers?
This way.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You will have a period of rebuttal after we hear from other speakers.
There's one for two minutes.
Well, he'll be part of the crowd.
Thank you. All right. All right. Mr., if it's Manukian, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, you will be part of the rebuttal time now. Okay. I have a, one speaker card, and as they approach, it's Ms. Taylor. As she approaches, we also received, for the record, a written communication from Elizabeth Ray, and she was citing opposition to the appeal. All right, please identify yourself and proceed.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jolene Taylor. I am in opposition of the appeal regarding outdoor grilling at 1240 South Glendale Avenue. There is an apartment complex directly behind the facility, and I have personally witnessed the grilling conducted at Karoon and the tremendous amount of smoke it generates. It is indisputable that this smoke has a negative effect on the quality of life of the neighbors in the apartment complex. As there is an ordinance requiring all commercial grilling be conducted indoors, and as all other banquet halls in Glendale have moved their grilling indoors, I concur with the findings of the zoning administrator and respectfully request that you sustain the previous determination. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker gentleman? Thank you very much, Mrs. Taylor. All right. I guess now it's time for your rebuttal. If you, you have a few minutes to rebut any statements. We have the new speaker card. I'll allow him to speak during the rebuttal, if there's anything you wish to add. We did have a question for you, maybe you've got the answer on how the interior grill is fired, the fuel source?
It's a natural gas.
Yeah, well, I don't know that, they come on through the record. Could we, Mr. Manukian, you have a card, are you going to speak or not?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I didn't answer.
Sure.
Yeah, and it's gas.
It's gas fired, all right, thank you. Close enough to the mic. All right, you have your time.
My name is Armin Manukian. I'm neighbor, business owner with Sam Harutvinyan at 1248 South Glendale. Under most of the time, business time and weekends as well, and I would like to let you know that this smoke comes out of this pit very, very rarely, perhaps once or twice a month, and on the contrary, of the lady said it has a beautiful smell, and I have many, many Americans, French, and sometimes approaching and telling me honestly that they love the smell so much if they can be treated, and you can, you can see they have a nice tie, they are not bums, or, you know, people like in that sort. And I'm sure everybody here has tasted Armenian barbecue. It gives very natural, if you like garlic, and you enter into a Chinese store, you love the garlic smell, and it is very appetizing, very delicious. The same thing is for some, for some Armenian barbecue. Sometimes, as the neighbors, we had to live with smells that sometimes we're not accustomed to. For example, Egyptians grill some inside of the animal, I don't know what they grill. It has a little bit different smelling as, not ours, but we live with it, you know, it's their natural thing. Or maybe we pass by a hamburger place, and we buy, buy a bakery, and we smell different things. But to me, it's normal, I take it as a neighbor, I accept it. I want you to tell, I want to tell you that there is another barbecue next, in the same shopping center. It still releases the same smoke in, in the air. The difference is, it is closed in a building, but the same thing has gone up to the air, and it is spreading all over, and the neighbors can smell that smell as well. Please accept Sam's application. He does nothing wrong, he's a very honest businessman, he does the living. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Ms. Artunian, this would be completing your rebuttal period. Do you have any concluding remarks?
As I said before, we only use it once or twice a month. We've been operating this business for over 10 years, and we haven't had any complaints from our neighbors. There haven't been any complaints on the records or anything like that, and we would like you to consider this decision.
Any other final questions? Sina, thank you very much. Before I close the public hearing and we enter deliberations, does anyone in the commission have any questions for staff?
Yes.
Please.
My general concern, question rather, is what would the applicant, or the appellant in this case, have to do to, to sort of ensure that they, of course, this is a Monday morning quarterbacking, what would they have to do, what did they have to do in order to receive the variance initially?
The variance or the approval?
They never had a variance.
That which is on appeal now. They were denied the variance. What would they need to do in order to have received it? Do we know that, or is this-
No, no, he wouldn't have known about the variance. What the applicant would have needed to do to maintain the grill would be to put it inside the building. That's what he would have needed, yes. That's what he would have needed to do, and then he would not have applied for a variance.
That is pursuant to the Glendale Municipal Code, correct?
Correct, sir.
Now, which brings me to the question that I asked my colleague earlier. How is this a zoning issue? If, if the Glendale Municipal Code says that grills have to be indoors-
Yes.
How can this-
Well, it doesn't say specifically grills indoors.
Well-
But it says outdoor activity, you can't do outdoor activities. For instance, that section of the code that I read you, 30.12.040, says, "All uses except outdoor eating areas, parking, growing flowers, and oak, blah, blah, blah," shall be conducted entirely within a completely enclosed building which is attached to a permanent foundation. And so, that code section's been in effect for, for years, and certainly since I've been here, which is 1988.
Okay, so that's a municipal code that we have on the books.
That's correct.
And presumably, every business entity in the city of Glendale is subject to that.
That's correct.
So again, my question, how is it that we are here? Why is this a zoning issue?
Okay, as we stated in the staff report, there was an error. We should not have stamped the plan with the zoning stamp back in the year 2000.
But even, even if you had it, someone has the right to ask for a variance and allow for a use.
That's correct. He could have asked for a variance at the time.
Mr. Garcia?
I was just saying, the section of the municipal code that's saying is in the zoning code, and so in order to get an exception to it, you have to apply for a variance, and that's why the zoning administrator denied that variance, and that's why we're here today.
See, the applicant never acted on that, on full part of the approval. It's like anything else. If you get a, a building permit for a house, and you only have a zoning stamp, and a fire department stamp, and maybe an engineer's stamp, but you don't have the building stamp, you can't build your house. So they, and over the nine-year period of time, they never acted upon it, and at, at some point during this time, we started saying, you know, something we shouldn't have stamped off on that thing in the first place, so at what point does, does that approval stop? And that's what we're looking at, and we said, you know, something, you know, you come back for that variance, and we're probably not, and then zoning administrator heard the case and decided, well, you know, you, you could do it inside, and we're going to deny it.
Mr. Ramirez?
I'd like some clarification. If the barbecue, the same barbecue or similar barbecue's moved indoors, is that satisfactory to, does that satisfy the code?
From a zoning point of view, yes.
And what about the smoke issue? Is that not an issue?
That would be a building and safety code, they would look at how that, how that worked.
For ventilation?
Yeah, for instance, you have, you have existing food establishments right now that cook on a, on a grill.
Sure, that's what I-
And so, they go through the same process, right?
And I guess they have scrubbers or special smoker resters and things like that.
That would be correct.
So if they enclose the, was the same barbecue with permits and so forth, that would be acceptable?
That's correct, sir.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Seeing none, we're closing the public hearing and entering commissioner deliberations. Would someone like to lead off with their, with their thoughts on the appeal? I'll point out, whoever goes first this time doesn't have to go first the next time.
Well, I just want to ask you, we're going to deliberate on the, on the findings, primarily. The findings issued by the zoning administrator, and I'll go ahead and start, I guess, on finding, first finding regarding the practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, based on the testimony given, the review of the administrator record, and the background information, it's in our file, that it seems to me that the, that hardship is self-imposed, and so, I don't, can't find, get a finding for that one, so basically, only need one finding to deny On the second one, unique circumstances, I find no evidence that there is, based on the information again presented, and the testimony that the situation is really unique. As pointed out by staff, many of these restaurants have these similar barbecues indoors. On granting the variance would be detrimental, would not be detrimental to the public welfare. Well, I think we had a complaint, and actually, during our public hearing here at the planning commission, we had a lot of complaints about smoking and the influence of smoke, the effect of smoke on, on health hazards and visibility and closest to, to property and so forth. So I can't get a, find a, I cannot find, make a finding on, on that issue. And why the granting of a variance would be keeping in, with the objectives of the applicable codes or regulations, it seems to me that this is in conflict with the desires of what we heard the city council state, that they are certainly want to control this kind of, of a problem, and of course, the neighborhoods affecting the quality of life and so forth, so I cannot make a finding regarding that this is in keeping with the objectives of the applicable regulations in effect. So that's, those are my comments, Mr.-
So you would, you would favor sustaining the-
I would, absolutely. I can't get any findings.
Just to clarify, very good.
I, I can only say that, I can't disagree that the findings are, at this point, are not, as, as Mr. Ramirez has stated, and as the zoning administrator has stated. I, I think the problem from my mind is that it stems from an unfortunate circumstance, which is that the, the city incorrectly approved the plan at one point, which led to probably more bureaucratic mess than, certainly led to more bureaucratic mess than was necessary, uncertainty for the applicant, and a whole host of problems. That's unfortunate, to my mind, that doesn't rise to the level of overturning the zoning administrator, and I would support the, support the original zoning administrator, zoning administrator opinion.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing that makes me vote in favor of the findings are the facts of the case. I truly sympathize with the appellant. Unfortunately, as things stand now, I cannot see overturning that which is before us, so...
All right. I guess my only comments are, obviously, the standards to grant a variance are quite high. There were specific, specific findings that need to be made. I think a couple of these are somewhat gray, but I echo specifically what Mr. Ramirez started off with in our deliberations by talking about the, let's say, the self-imposed nature of the hardship. The fact of the matter is that we can't allow economic costs or interest to enter into our deliberations as far as what we do in the terms of granting variances or CUPs. There would be a cost involved for the appellant to move his grill indoors, but I, I don't see any compelling reason that it should be allowed to remain outside, given, given what our zoning code is and the reasons already stated by the zoning administrator. That said, could I have a motion, please, to apparently sustain the zoning administrator's previous decision?
I'll move that upon review and consideration of all the materials and exhibits in the current record relative to the standard variance case, PVAR 2007-016, of the property located at 1240 South Glendale, and having conducted this appeal hearing on said matter, that the commission hereby sustains the zoning administrator's decision and denies the standard variance case in accordance with the findings set forth in the decision letter of July 25, 2007.
One second, Nick.
Motion support, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jerome?
Aye.
Commissioner Manukian?
Aye.
And Chairman Kane?
Aye. On a vote of four to zero, the planning commission has sustained variance case number PVAR 2007-1016. The motion shall take effect and be enforced upon the 10th day after its passage. We'll be moving on to agenda item 7A, Old Business. It's tentative parcel map number GLN 1623. The location is 3525 Old Torre Avenue. This was completed March 5, 2008. It's a request to subdivide one developed lot into three parcels for the purpose of consorting three new single-family residences on the lots. The two existing detached residential units will be demolished. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA. The applicant is Richard Barron and Li Peng Lau. Staff is recommended by Villia Zemetitis, and it is, our action is to consider a motion to approve the tentative parcel map. Now, I understand, prior to the meeting, there was some information gathered as far as the, not the STC zone, but help me out with the noise level.
The noise level. Why don't I address that in just one second?
All right.
Before we begin the staff report, I would like to distribute copies of a memo prepared by Michael Garcia, the Assistant Chief City Attorney, that was presented to all of you via email earlier today, and if you have not printed that out, we wanted you to have a record of it.
I have one.
I have one as well.
I'll take it, another one, though.
I have one.
It's easier to read.
Just by the way, there's also copies available for the, for the public to-
Correct.
And we could also email them to the applicant and to our interested person.
And for the public's-
And yes, I was going to add that-
And for the public's benefit, you'll add what this is about.
Actually, yes, and I will clarify that. And the particular memo was also sent to the applicant and other members who had left their email addresses with us, and I have distributed it to the individuals in the audience who wish to have copies. So there are additional copies available as well. Now again, as just stated by Chairman Kane, this was a tentative tract map proposal for a three parcel subdivision. There's an existing one lot that currently has two residential units that will be demolished as part of this project. The intention is obviously to subdivide the lot and to build three new homes. The project was presented to the planning commission two weeks ago on March the 5th. There was a recommendation to approve the request for the tentative tract map with 19 additional conditions. Following the applicant's presentation and testimony from the public, the planning commission deliberated, and following much discussion, there was a request made by the commission to have the city attorney take a look and see whether or not conditions of approval could be included that would specifically address the setbacks in the floor area ratios of these, of the three proposed units. And based on the research conducted by our chief assistant city attorney, Mike Garcia, it appears that the planning commission has within its jurisdiction and rights the power to go ahead and attach conditions of approval that would address such items, provided that these conditions of approval directly affect the public health, safety, and welfare, and that specifically address the compatibility of these developments in regards to their neighbors. So the commission would have to make a finding or back up their arguments as to why these particular conditions, and this would be to, A, to increase the required setback from the currently permitted six-foot minimum, or B, to decrease the floor area ratio in this particular zone, this again, is an R1, single-family residential zone, from the limited 40% or .40 floor area ratio to whatever percentage or ratio the commission feels is acceptable at this point in time. That concludes staff's brief presentation or summary of the previous proposal. The applicant is in the audience as well as interested parties. I would also like to point out, and again, this was something that was brought before the planning commission in your deliberations two weeks ago. the Planning Commission in your deliberations two weeks ago, if the commission felt they wanted to see two lots, that the parcel be subdivided only into two lots, you would essentially have to deny the project. You would not be able to proceed because this particular project is being presented as a three parcel project, meaning one lot facing directly Altura, 3525 Altura, and then the two flag lots behind it. We would also like to point out, it's come to our attention, that the project is actually located within a noise contour level of 70 CNEL. And based on this particular information that's come to light today, the project, or development, according to our noise ordinance, is above the acceptable range for new development. Because this Planning Commission has to make a required finding showing consistency with the general plan elements, unfortunately, you would not be able to act on this particular project if you choose to proceed with approval with conditions. Unfortunately, you would not be able to proceed in that direction because we would need to come back, have this case continued in order to allow time to provide a noise study. If that noise study shows that the exterior noise levels are less than 70 CNEL, then the commission has the ability to make the required finding that it is consistent with the noise element. If however, the commission sees according to the noise level of the study that is, comes back with a CNEL level of greater than 70%, at that point in time, unfortunately, we would not be able to make that finding.
Right. So just to clarify, our path could be to have the hearing, and if the direction of the commission is to approve with conditions, then what we could do is based on that sentiment, continue it once again until, with the date uncertain because the Lord knows how long it'll take for the noise study. And at that point, we could recalendar it and kind of continue or continue with the hearing, make our findings, assuming it's under the 70, and move on, right?
That is correct.
So I guess what I'm saying, it seems to make sense to have the hearing.
It is up to, it is up to the commission at this point in time to decide. And again, this is-
Is there anything you wanted to pipe in, Mr. Garcia, or you're just interested in the process?
Notting my head in the general agreement. But no, you can make the decision now that you want to know what the results of the noise study are before you start the process, or you can start it and if you're inclined to deny it.
Well, here's, and I meant it's a little bit of a hoops, but the reason I'm thinking we probably should have the hearing is if we're going to deny the project, it's not fair to the applicant to spend the money on a noise study.
Correct.
Where if we're going to prove it with conditions, they can at least hear what the conditions are that we're thinking of, and then they can do an economic analysis based on the cost of the noise study, and then they can decide if they want to proceed or not. It'll fall off calendar, they can proceed or not proceed, and then we'll go from there. Is there objection or observations from any of my fellow commissioners on that path?
Actually, I had a couple of questions.
Please, all right.
Right now, we have four commissioners on deck. If one of us should vote against the project right now as it stands, I want to know if that individual is foreclosed from coming back later and voting down the line.
No, because again, you wouldn't necessarily be, if the commission as a whole after deliberation was inclined to approve it, you wouldn't actually be voting on the project.
I won't take a motion or a formal vote, it'll be a sentiment.
So, being sentimental, okay.
The, if the commission were to deny this application and the applicant were interested in coming back with a lot split of two lots, they would still be subject to the noise requirements and have to do a noise study at that time?
Correct. Yes, they would.
Thank you.
My feelings, let's continue.
Without any hearing whatsoever?
No, continue as in the-
Continue it today, okay. Because we're talking about an eventual continuing, okay. Okay, well, then with that said, we will continue with whatever this case number is. Well, we'll continue with your remarks and the process for GLN 1623.
That essentially concludes my brief presentation and summary. So if you'd like-
All right. Before we continue then, I can't remember who was missing last time. One of us four was not here.
Actually, Commissioner Ramirez and Commissioner Torgeson were both not here.
So for them to participate, we need to have, Mr. Ramirez should aver that he's seen the recording of the session and can fully participate.
Correct.
I am prepared to do that, Mr. Chair. I have reviewed the videotape of the previous hearing before the commission, whatever that date was, of the subject tentative parcel map GLN 1623. So I am ready to participate.
Very good. Well, that said, we've had staff remarks. Any other questions of staff at this time? All right, we'll allow the applicant to come forward and present their case. We've got two cards representing the applicant, to my knowledge, and it appears that Mr. Bogosian, you're going to begin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission and city staff. My name is George Bogosian, Bogosian and Associates. My address is 1111 North Brand Boulevard, Suite 202, Glendale. I'm here, as you can see, the staff goes through extensive research and work before they bring any of these projects before you and making their decisions. And also, the applicant spends a lot of money, all the requirements of architectural and subdivision and all the consultants. At this point, I'd like to request that since we really meet all the requirements and surpass the requirements of the subdivision for three lots, at this point, it is very important to, the only item that I see that it's not clear for you and it's not clear for us and for the staff is the noise level. Because as you receive the information from the city attorney's decision on the setback issue whereby you can make any decision that you want to make much more setbacks than what the zoning requirements are. And it is okay with the applicant that you expand the setbacks. We have no objections of that as long as it's a good project, and that is what we are looking for. But obviously, the most important item, which is the noise level, that it was brought up to us at this point, first time in fact, we just found out as we entered to this meeting. And I'd like to request, as authorized by the applicant, to extend, to continue this project so we can have a consultant in orderly fashion to review and bring a report to you whereby you can make your decision much better, as well as the staff can make that decision and/or if there's any mitigations, or the project meets everything and we want to make sure that the project will be before you to meet all the requirements of the three-lot subdivision. We thank you very much for your consideration.
Questions for the speaker? Seen none at this time?
Well, I guess I can ask you a technical question, since you're the civil engineer and this is pertaining to the grading plan. You note that you're going to export 71 cubic yards. Why export anything? I mean, it's such a small amount, you can just spread out the soil on any of those parcels or all of them, and you're going to wind up with another three inches of elevation.
That's very correct, and that's a very good point. We could create some mounds, but it's, that is true, we could do that.
Okay. I would personally like to see that, none.
Yeah, we could really work that up into planters.
All right. And Mr. Barron is the, actually, the actual applicant, isn't he?
That's correct, and he has authorized me to inform you for extending this project so we can get the noise report prepared and brought before you. And I assume it may take only four weeks, so it's up to you what you decide.
So considerably, we might consider a date certain and have to continue then. If we want to go that route, that would save from re-advertising? All right. We will consider a date certain as we approach. Mr., go ahead.
And I forgot to ask you another question, and that was pertaining to the different sizes of the lots. I know some, the flag lots versus, but the front lot is much bigger than the other lots.
No, the lot in the back, the rear lot is the largest one because we have an oak tree and we are, we have to clear the oak tree completely and we have an oak tree report, and that's the reason that last lot is so large.
I see. Okay.
Isn't part of that also the length of the driveway?
And also, it affects the length of driveway, but as you can see, it's quite a bit like 8,500, 600 square feet is the last one, which is 5,500 is the required.
All right, thank you. Next speaker card, part of the applicant-
Thank you very much.
-team is Mr. Barron.
Good evening. My name is Richard Barron. I represent myself and my wife, and I'd like to read this to you. This is my comments. Dear commission members, we are here before you to present to you our plan for the subdivision of the property we have lived in as our home in Glendale for over 10 years. Specifically, the property and house at 3525 Altura Ave. This plan has been developed by the best people that we know. In each case, they have done the necessary footwork in order to properly draw up the required documentation to abide by city, county, or state ordinances and laws. Specifically, we would like to thank each of the following for their excellent service: George Bogosian, civil engineer and architect of George Bogosian Incorporated, for the extensive work he did in interacting with the offices in the county and the city of Glendale and drawing up the plans presented to you; Peter Palin of Advanced GeoTechniques for his soils report; Craig Crody, arborist for his report; and Larry G. Tyson, landscaper for his detailed landscape artistry. Additionally, we would like to thank the Glendale planning staff for the professional job they have done in checking the details of our application and in preparing it for this commission hearing. As noted above, we have made every effort to see that the plan is consistent with the Glendale city codes and ordinances. Here, we need to say that these codes and ordinances have been designed not only so that we follow them, but so they are fair to all members of the community, including our neighbors and ourselves. In regards to my neighbors, you have heard the concerns of two of my neighbors to the rear of my property, 3500 Prospect Ave. and 3504 Prospect Ave., presented at the previous meeting of this board on March 5, 2008. Since then, we have arranged a second private meeting. A copy of the invitation may have been given to you by staff. If not, we have made copies for your perusal, with them to present the plan that is being proposed and to answer any questions and to better understand their concerns. This meeting has occurred in a Glendale planning office, the kind assistance of Villia Zemetitis. Villia helped our neighbors better understand the purpose of these hearings and the responsibility of the city and supplied them with copies of the submitted plans. We hope this meeting was helpful to them. We know it gave us a better idea of our neighbors' concerns. As such, we believe in at least two cases that their concerns were at least partially mitigated. Specifically, the setback from the back property line exceeded the required distance by over a factor of two, 13 feet, nine inches versus the required six feet, and that the oak trees at the rear of the property would screen much of their yard from possible headlights illuminating their house. One of our closest neighbors has also expressed his self with respect to this plan. We present to the commission, if not already in their possession, a letter from our closest neighbor, Mario Benetti, at 3521 Altura Ave. His two-story house is directly adjacent to our property. We believe you will see from the letter that he firmly and positively supports the proposed improvement to our property. Last, we thank the commission for their time, thoughtfulness, and indulgence in examining and making a decision in this matter. We request a positive decision and pray that you will make one. Sincerely, Richard and Li Peng Barron.
I don't seem to have a copy of any letter.
Actually, it appears that they are, they will be brought to you shortly.
All right.
And yes, I was going to note that there was not only a letter, and that's what I asked Commissioner Ramirez just now, were they distributed to you? There was one letter in support and quite a number of letters in opposition, so it appears that they were not distributed, and I've asked Ida to go get them.
All right.
So you will have to-
I've got a stack of letters here, some were mine, but I guess we need copies of these.
I believe here they are. There you are.
I wonder if they're similar.
Let's see.
Do we have any questions at this moment for the speaker? We may have something later. Thank you for now, sir. We're going to take a minute and absorb this, I think, for a second, just quickly at least.
And a few of those letters are actually duplicates, and just let me read into the record then. Support by Mr. Mario Benetti at 3525 Altura Avenue. There was a letter addressed to Hassan Hagani by Rachel Coe, to Mr. Hassan Hagani by Cindy Roeburg, a letter to the planning commissioners.
We don't see, I don't see the letter in support that you've referenced, the first individuals.
Not, okay. There should have been an additional copy in yellow. If not, then perhaps we can ask Ida to remind me of making another copy, I have the original here. A letter to the planning commissioners and also one addressed to Hassan Hagani by Berdith Buck, a letter to Hassan Hagani from Ms. Paige Farmer, one from Joe and Janine Bell.
Email, I believe.
Forgive me, yes, these are, most of these are emails. An email also from Larry Thomas, a fax that was sent to the city clerks from Sarah Morgan-Arnold, an email that was sent to Hassan Hagani from Sarah Morgan-Arnold, an email that was sent to Hassan Hagani from the Torres family, an email that was sent to Hassan Hagani from Richard and Diane Nelson, an email that was sent to Hassan Hagani by Jenny Schweng, a letter that was faxed to the city clerk's office by Doris Heeter, and also a letter that was faxed over from Cindy Roeburg to the city clerk. And I know copies were made of the letters in support, but-
When were these letters and emails received? Were they received prior to, after the composition of the packet?
Yes, they were. All of these were received after the packets had been-
Friday, Monday, Friday, Sunday, Monday.
The majority were received, and unfortunately, they all went to Hassan Hagani, and so he forwarded, he was the brunt, he took the brunt of these emails, and so had they been directed to me, I would have been able to forward them directly to you, but we did the best we could.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Hagani, how many emails do you get a day?
Approximately 90.
So.
It's not counting the emails such as the one for this case that were deliberately directed to you.
Oh, yes, this one-
That added about 30 or 40 per day, yes.
So.
All right. And we do now have the letter from Mr. Benetti.
Yes, there was a copy. There was, there was a copy, if you can find it.
Okay, if it's all right with the commissioners, I'll continue with the public hearing.
Yes, please.
All right. I have three speaker cards. We'll start with Linda Winfield.
I too want to start with some thank yous. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address this planning committee regarding the subdivision of the property at Altura. I'd like to publicly thank Councilman John Drayman for discussing the matter with me, Planning Director Hassan Hagani for his cordial and prompt response to some of my questions, Villia, thank you, for, she's our senior planner, and she facilitated our meeting and clarified some issues for us, and for the many Glendale residents who did email and write letters to support a no vote on this proposal to subdivide the property at 3525 Altura into three separate lots. On March 5th, as you've heard, after voting to postpone this issue until tonight's meeting, Mr. Kane requested both parties meet to see if a compromise could be reached regarding the Altura property. Again, Mr. Barron said, last Wednesday, we did just that, Mr. and Mrs. Barron, Ms. Zemetitis, Ms. Gibson, Mr. Winfield, myself, we met to discuss the plans for this property. Nothing new was brought to the table. Mr. Barron made an attempt to win us over discussing property improvements like underground wiring, sidewalks, shade trees. We saw proposed construction plans which include turrets, tile roofs, wine cellars. It's massive, completely inappropriate, and inconsistent for the neighborhood, and unacceptable to us as neighbors. We, however, Ms. Gibson, my husband and myself, we were willing to accept a compromise. Subdivide the property into two lots, construct two homes facing Altura, abandon the flag lot idea. Each yard, each property would have its own driveway, its own front yard, its own backyard. With a consistent setback from Altura, these two new lots would afford families the option of pools, patios, and, most importantly, privacy. Altura neighbors and Prospect neighbors would be minimally affected by this subdivision. Unfortunately, Mr. Barron would have absolutely no part of this discussion. Mr. Barron has a responsibility, responsibility as a property owner, to maintain his property in a way that glorifies, not abuses, the community. Three lots are excessive. Three two-story homes are excessive. Presently, within a 500-foot radius of the 3525 Altura property, there are only 10 two-story homes. Mr. Barron's proposal will increase that by 30%. That is excessive. Mr. Barron may have the right to subdivide his property, but he does not have the right to set a precedent for the entire community of Glendale. This planning committee has a responsibility too. This committee has been established to maintain, protect, and preserve the integrity of our Glendale neighborhoods. What is your vision for Glendale? Is it to increase revenue at the expense of existing community members? Is it to create a population so dense we're all sharing yards and driveways? Is it to bring the mega-population of downtown Glendale up into the foothills? I know that Mr. Barron has a right to subdivide his property. I have been assured that neither the obstruction of my view nor the invasion of my privacy is a reason to halt this subdivision. As a teacher, I constantly hear students defending their behavior with the words, "It's a free country, I can do whatever I want." And thank God, America is a free country. But our freedom comes with responsibility. It isn't just about what you're allowed to do, but what is in the best interest of the common good. We're talking about rights versus responsibility. We know teenage boys have the right to walk around town with their jeans belted below their buttocks, exposing under shorts to anybody who will look. Parents have the right to take six- and seven-year-old children to R-rated movies. They get to be exposed to profanity, nudity, violence, and abuse. It's a parent's right, but it's wrong. Adults have the right to teach young children to be prejudiced, to be biased, to be unjust, to be intolerant of, to fear, and to hate entire races of people. These rights are destroying our nation. Barron's rights will destroy our neighborhood. Why are we even having a hearing on this matter? Well, I've been assured that this is a public hearing and that the planning committee wants to hear how the public feels about Mr. Barron's proposal, but I fear money is at the root of this decision. I suspect Mr. Barron stands to make quite a profit from this subdivision and subsequent construction. So does the city of Glendale. It's not my concern, nor should it be the concern of this committee. I hope you're listening to the public tonight and that you are willing to work in the best interest of our entire community. Tonight, this committee has a decision to make, and I understand it's a difficult decision. You want to honor Mr. Barron's rights to subdivide his property, at the same time respecting the rights of his neighbors, maintaining the consistency of the neighborhood, and living up to Glendale's vision. Vote no on three parcels. Force Mr. Barron to compromise. He has other options. Please don't let the rights of one destroy the rights of hundreds. A no vote doesn't tell Mr. Barron he can't subdivide, it tells him he has to do it in a responsible manner. Glendale proudly supports character and ethics education in our community. Each month, we honor a different theme. The theme this month is loyalty. In closing, I would like to share the chorus of the song. I won't sing it. Stand by what you believe in. Listen closely to your heart. Be careful and choose wisely. Loyalty keeps safe your heart. Be loyal tonight, gentlemen, to the many people of Glendale who do not want to see this community overdeveloped. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for the opportunity to share my concerns, and I pray that it didn't fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Was there any questions for the speaker? All right, thank you, Ms. Winfield. For the record, Mr. Winfield, Eugene Winfield, turned in a card but volunteered not to speak. And the only other card I have on the matter is from Mr. Keiter. And that's you, sir, but you chose not to speak?
There was one additional card, actually, from Ms. Gibson.
Well, I may have misplaced that.
Oh, perhaps I had misplaced it, since I still have it.
You know, there's this disturbing trend where letters and cards and, and I know it's a pure accident, so I don't mean to make you blush. All right, I actually have a card from Ms. Gibson.
My name is Carol Gibson. I live at 3504 Prospect Avenue in Glendale, and I am here this evening to tell you that I love my neighborhood. Tonight, at the Glendale Civic Auditorium, one of my second-grade students is being honored as a finalist in the I Love My Neighborhood contest. I would have liked to be there with her this evening to see if she actually won the grand prize, but it's also important to me to tell you that I love my neighborhood and that I'm very vehemently opposed to a subdivision of three lots with three two-story homes directly in my backyard. I am not afforded any protection by the so-called protected oak tree. Everything is open, and it will take away my privacy. I love my yard. All my neighbors know I'm always in my yard working, and I would like to continue to do that. I am a property owner too. I am very lucky. I've been a teacher in Glendale for 13 years, and seven years ago, I was able to purchase my own home in Glendale. Many of my colleagues are driving in from canyon country and other faraway places, and I feel so lucky to be there, and I hope that you won't let the rights of one individual who is out to make a profit take away my rights to enjoy my neighborhood. I am a participant in my community, and I think that I should be considered as well as he should. Thank you very much.
Before you sit down, and I would direct this as well to, I have no ability to remember names, Ms. Winfield, one of the things that we had discussed, or that I had suggested, rather, and first, I'm very pleased that Planning did put you and the applicant together to at least try to talk things out. One of the things that we had suggested in the course of things was that recognizing, again, certain property rights that might come into play, was the idea of additional conditions or conditions that you'd like to see imposed. Now, at the time, I also just suggested that you prepare those in advance so that the applicant would have time to look at them. Did you do any research on that? Did you come up with things along the lines of suggested conditions in terms of the development of the property?
We did not, because we've been assured, we attempted to, everything they're doing is within his rights, and so there are no mitigating circumstances, as you had asked us to come back with.
But, okay, I'm going to let staff interject.
Let's interject. However, what is proposed on the tentative tract map, as you see before you, it actually shows a building mass footprint that has a six-foot setback that would be the minimum required setback per the zoning code. When we took a look at the conceptual plans, the conceptual plans that were submitted as part of the package prepared by George Bogosian actually showed a 13-foot, nine-inch setback. So again, those conceptual plans are submitted to give the planning commission sufficient reasons to show that actually the project could be built at its present condition, but again, what's presented in the conceptual plans at 13, nine-foot setback is different than what is shown as a building footprint on the proposed tentative tract map of a six-foot setback.
And those would be the kind of potential conditions we could consider.
Correct.
Those are the types of things that you might have bandied about. So I understand, I understand your thought process. I was curious if anything had been reduced. Mr. Ramirez.
Along those same lines, would you, as neighbors, accept a different condition, for example, a two-story house, limited to, I mean, a one-story house on the rear two lots and a two-story in the front lot?
Can't do that.
Because I know, I noticed, based on the testimony that was given previously, you were concerned about view, intrusion into your backyard, the quality of life, and those kind of things, and if we can place a condition of one story for the two rear lots, still retaining the three lots, would that be acceptable to the neighborhood?
I would like to just interject because, as mentioned in Mike Garcia's memo, when you take away the driveways of the flag lots, the actual buildable lot area for the two rear units drops to essentially somewhere roughly at 5,900 square feet. So to have a one-story structure in order to have the required, well, in this case, it's not required, but have open space and lock coverage and whatnot, it would really limit it, especially, you know, in regards to providing a garage and parking and whatnot. So it would, again, it would be up to the, to the actual applicant to make that work, but I'm not sure if the rear two lots would be, you know, have sufficient lot area to only have one, a one-story development. So, and again, we want to make sure that the commission understands you would be able to go ahead and add conditions of approval regarding setbacks or other type of development standards, but it's imperative that you impose these conditions as protection for the health, safety, and public welfare of the neighborhood and of the community. So it's not just an arbitrary, oh, what if this and what if it's that? I mean, you really have to go.
I made those comments in light of the letter that we got from the city attorney, that we apparently have that capability. We're talking about compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, with protection of the public safety, welfare and health, and welfare and safety and so forth fall into that category in my mind, so.
Mr. Ramirez, I appreciate that thought, and I think we have wide latitude. I also appreciate staff pointing out that if we look at the specifics of the lot, if we, depending what we impose based on square footage, it might, it might bore on a taking. So I appreciate.
Well, I understand that.
We need to analyze.
I understand that, but that's an option. I'm asking only if they're willing to consider it.
I see.
That's it.
Quite honestly, we were told.
May not work.
We were told that those plans were not really up for discussion, that the vote tonight is going to be yes or no for three lots, and that we were not.
With potential conditions.
But again, we have, and again, that was one of the reasons that we continued it, is we have a certain amount of latitude within that in terms of protecting, protecting the public good to impose a number of restrictions. We've, we talked before we went on the continuation about floor ratio limitations. We've approached the idea of a single-family home. There's a, there's a whole series of other things that could come.
Single-story.
Well, I'm sorry, I said, single-family. Yeah, single-story home. So, and so if you ignore that part and you just answer what Mr. Ramirez was asking, I mean, assuming, well, if you just, just ask, if you could, answer what Mr. Ramirez asked on a single-story home.
I would like to answer on that, and we can deliberate whether it's other items, whether it's feasible or not practical or illegal or whatever, but would you folks consider that?
I think that truly the only viable solution to the problem is to maintain, if you're serious about maintaining the consistency of the neighborhood, is to divide it into two lots that both are open to Altura. I think the minute you start putting in driveways, then we open up a can of worms, and everybody who has a lot big enough then can look to the same opportunity, and so that would be my concern with saying yes to a single story.
So if you had a choice between two two-story houses and, say, two one-story and one two, and one two-story at the front, you would take the two, two-story houses?
Two two-story houses with the consistent setback of Altura.
Regardless of, it could be master houses, however.
Well, but they'll be facing Altura, the lot is very deep, and we still have our privacy.
Keep in mind that the FAR is .4 in that area, and you could have, I don't know, I think staff can probably tell us what, it could be, it could be up to 4,500 square feet, perhaps. So just wanted you to keep in mind that those are trade-offs.
And we do understand that, but again, we're talking about, there would be yards. They would, these two homes would be afforded front yards and backyards, their own driveways. There's not a sharing process going on. So to answer your question, that would not be my first choice. Would I prefer that over three two-story homes? Yes, but if I'm going to put it in order of priority, that would come number two. Number one is two lots.
Now, they understand how the math works. If it's two lots, they still get two stories, and they, and they get much larger houses.
Now, I asked if you would take an opportunity to walk the property. Did any of you have an opportunity to go?
I certainly drove by the property, sure.
Okay, so that you know that they are, they're very deep lots, which is what affords Mr. Barron the opportunity to consider three two-story homes, and that really is, is excessive.
Not, not, not to be harsh, but, but we're just asking you to address questions. So if you could try to just stay focused on what our questions are, we've heard your comments already, we can absorb those, we're just exploring some options. All right, so all I ask is you recognize that if it ever became a two-lot development, the houses they can put on it are going to be enormous, and then you're going to, you could be potentially complaining about mansionization when it's still within his rights to build larger homes. So again, all I, all I say is be careful what you ask for sometimes, but I do also hear what your arguments are.
I appreciate you.
Do we have any other questions for the speaker? All right, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Any other closing remarks from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, George Bogosian again. As you witnessed, Ms. Winfield eloquently mentioned about her disagreement of three lots, mainly she is looking as profit. It is not profit. Please just remember, this, each lot in here is 5,500 square foot per zone as required, and we are talking by 8,500 square foot of each lot. So this is not just, you cannot create something if you don't have the lot area, and the planning staff, when they come up with approval, or their decision of approval, looking everything upside down, it's not just that lightly taken. So, and also, one important factor, this is within 500-foot radius. It's averaged, we are above a 50-foot frontage, we are giving 70-foot frontage, and there is nothing in this project that it is, everything is surpassing, and we are willing also to go along with any setbacks that you are required. And the massiveness already that Mrs. Winfield speaks of massiveness, we have not submitted the plans. It's conceptual plans given to the planning department for now, and this project will go through design review board, and it will be seen very closely of the number of stories, a floor area ratio, everything will be discussed, including the color. So this is where they can impose any further conditions if they want to bring it out to the design review board. So with all this, I respectfully request that you consider the decision of the planning departments in approving this project. We will appreciate very much. Thank you again.
All right, thank you, sir.
If you have any questions.
A question from Mr. Ramirez.
I can't, you know, this, you have a map that we got. I can't, you know, this, the map that we got, the tenor map, it's a reduced version, it's very hard to read, but, but the frontage of the lot is-
But we do have a map on the board.
Okay.
Which shows clearly each lot and the sizes, the planning department has shown very nicely all the sizes for each lot.
No, I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in, in the frontage only. Is that 100 feet?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. 110 and 115 in the back and 100 in the front. So if they were to build two homes with frontage on Altura, they would need to get a-
70 feet is the frontage for one lot and 15, 15 for the flag lots.
No.
Yes, correct. One, the first front lot has a 70-foot frontage and then a 15-foot required flag lot driveway and a 15-foot required flag lot driveway. What Commissioner Ramirez is referring to is actually an R-1R standards. You would not need a CUP for a 50-foot wide lot in an R-1 zone. In an R-1R zone, yes, you would need an 80-foot frontage minimum, or else you'd need a CUP.
Not, not for this zoning area.
But not for this particular zoning.
So they could put two homes fronting Altura?
They could, they could put two 50-foot wide lots with 236 feet of depth for, and each of those lots would have a lot area of 11,827 feet, which according by the R-1 standards would be permitted a floor area ratio of .4, which there was a question raised, what would be the maximum size of a home that would be able to be constructed on that lot? In this case, that would be a 4,730-square-foot home, which would require a three-car garage. If every time you go above 3,500 square feet, you're required a three-car garage. So, but again, the average lot size in this particular neighborhood is just over 7,000.
Mm-hmm.
So-
Would they put the garage in the back?
They would be able to put the garage in the back, attached, detached, as long as it meets the current zoning standards for the R-1.
Right.
Any other questions for the speaker? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, let's, let's start off by deciding whether there's a continuation or not. And I guess I'd like a straw poll. You can certainly do in the course of making remarks, but let's see how we feel about granting with conditions versus a denial. Mr. Manukian, would you like to start off?
My, my tendency is to deny this application. It was, the first time it appeared before us, it is now. I understand that the property in question meets all the requirements that the, that the various city ordinances put before a property owner to subdivide his or her property into three lots, and I appreciate that fact. But it seems to me that there is something to be said about the intangible. The property owners in question intend to put three homes on a property that before has had only one. After they do this, they will be gone. The engineer, the track engineer will be gone. The only people who remain will be the neighbors. Will now have to deal with three properties where, and three homes and three families and three sets of new problems, whereas before there was only one. It seems to me that this commission does have the obligation to concern itself with the intangible to a certain extent. And that's why, the very first time we talked about this, I mentioned it and staff was very clear that the two, two-lot option is not before us because the application is for a three-lot subdivision. And I said, "Fine." I was hoping that, you know, it would be understood that I would personally like it, not that it matters really. But the point is, the applicant has chosen to remain within the confines of the original application, which is to say they want to subdivide it in three. I oppose that. And regardless of whether the vote is now or, well, if the, we take a vote today, I would vote against.
Thank you, Mr. Manukian. Mr. Gero?
If you're pulling me for the, for my sentiment, I have to say that I was open to the idea of three lots with conditions potentially at the last meeting, but ever hearing the discussion today and looking at adjacent properties, I am more inclined at this point to deny the application as well and have the applicant come back with two lots. That said, I will correct one thing, which is there are two existing houses on the property today, so it would go-
There are two structures, I believe.
There are two residential units.
One legal lot.
One legal lot, correct.
Not subdivided.
Is one of them a granny house or how?
It's a legal non-conforming situation since the property was annexed from the county.
Ramirez?
I, I feel the same way, that we should deny the three-lot subdivision as proposed unless, and I would favor the two-lot split with the houses in the front and garages in the back. That's where I-
All right.
Too many impacts and there's obviously an appeal process and decisions like this that are very difficult to make by, by boards such as us should, could be made by the council. I think they're the ones that set the policy.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. For my part, last month I favored working along the concepts of approving the three lots and putting in some extremely restrictive guidelines in an attempt to manage the development of the property, looking at floor area ratios, looking at setbacks. I continued the thought process. I was thinking about, I mean, some of the conditions we can put in, we have wide latitude as it relates to protecting the public. I thought about putting in something we've done in the past with construction hours, limiting construction from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, no Saturday, no Sunday. Things like that to make it work. But in revisiting the site and going by the site and recognizing the nature of the existing neighborhood, the series of 50-foot lots and, and single-home developments in those 50-foot lots, I've come along, and I have to actually agree with all three of you gentlemen, to the idea that this should be a two-lot subdivision. There should be two 50-foot wide lots as opposed to trying to gerrymander in the flag lots. So with that said, would someone like to make a motion?
Now, forgive me, because in this case, you'd be making a motion for denial. And we do not have a motion prepared at this point in time for denial. We can either quickly draft something and then bring it back to you, perhaps at, by the end of Planning Commission, since we've had a very-
Or we can continue for you for the purpose of the-
Or you are welcome to continue it for two weeks and we would have a motion for you in your next packet.
I'm fine with that.
Well, what's the big deal about a motion now?
Well, it'd be a motion because you would essentially have to make findings.
I know, but you could tell us what the motion is and we-
Well, the, the motion would be something similar because there was a, a case that was similar. It's up to you. Commissioner Kane, do you have a preference?
Mr. Ramirez, I understand the idea of wrapping it up, but I also like the idea of staff preparing a nice clean document citing the reasons so that there's a solid basis.
Because you have to sign it. Okay.
I have to sign it, that's right.
I understand.
Unless I pass the gavel somehow to you, but in any event. So, so with that said, I, I guess we need a motion to, for staff to prepare findings?
Yeah, a motion directing staff to prepare findings in support of denying the, the project.
Yes, very good. Could I have?
I would so move. I would so second.
I have a motion made by board, by, not board members, this is not the signed review board. By Commissioner Gero, a second by Commissioner Manukian.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gero?
Aye.
Commissioner Manukian?
Aye.
Chairman Kane?
Aye. So on a vote of four to oh, we've directed staff to prepare motions, or prepare a motion that will deny tenor parcel map number GLN 1623. Okay, we're going to move-
Chairman?
Yes.
Unfortunately, due to other obligations, I must leave the meeting.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to new business, 8A, which is the First Amendment Development Agreement. Do you need some time to set up for that or can we?
No, we're, we're ready. If you don't mind.
We are going to take about a three-to-five-minute short break. And all I can point out before we go to break is I have 30 people in this room and one card for speaker. And that may be the case, but I just find that rather surprising. All right. Okay, we're going to be in adjournment for three to five minutes.
I'm sorry.
We're live.
We're not live yet. We're still in recess. But any minute now.
Should we keep the file, the information?
Yeah, we'd keep it.
Probably a good idea to keep it, huh?
Yes, we'd like it.
Okay.
Hey, you're live on now.
Okay, we're back in session. It is the April 2nd, regular meeting of the Planning Commission continuing. Searching for agenda, here we are. We're moving on to agenda item 8A. It's new business. It's the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for DreamWorks Animation LLC. Its location is at 1,000 Flower Street. It's an amendment to an approved statutory development agreement and participation agreement in order to apply the current IND Zone Standards for Industrial Mixed Use Large-Scale Projects to the continued development of the DreamWorks Animation campus. Phase 2 consists of a six-story, 128,718-square-foot addition to the existing 91,552-square-foot Lakeside Building. In addition to the existing parking garage to provide 265 more parking spaces for a total of 882, an extension of the surface parking lot on the south side of the site adjacent to the Los Angeles River to connect with Flower Street. The applicant is DreamWorks Animation. Staff is represented by Villia Zematidis. And we have a recommendation to make a motion to recommend that council and the redevelopment agency approve the proposed First Amendment. Let me start with staff comments.
That is correct. Chairman Kane, planning commissioners, again, before you is an amendment to the previously approved Development Agreement and Participation Agreement for DreamWorks Animation LLC. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation that will include photos and elevations and a brief summary again of the First Amendment to this Development Agreement, as well as a brief summary of the Second Addendum to the program EIR. So if you'd allow me to continue and actually to shut off one of the sets of lights before The project site is located on a triangular-shaped lot bounded by Flower Street to the northeast, the Los Angeles River to the south, and a private property to the northwest. As you see before you on the screen, the top photograph shows the existing DreamWorks Animation campus. And the photo or rendering directly below is an excerpt from our zoning code, which shows that all of the parcels and projects within the area are actually zoned IND, industrial zoning. And, forgive me for continuing, also, the project site is approximately 13.3 acres in size. Brief background, in 1996, that would be June 26, 1996, the city entered into a statutory Development Agreement and Purchase Agreement in order to facilitate the development of the DreamWorks Animation campus. The original Development Agreement incorporated the M1 Restricted Industrial zoning standards applicable at the time of the adoption. The Phase 1 of the DreamWorks Animation campus, consisting of 331,783 square feet, was completed per the Development Agreement and in compliance with the M1 standards. This was done back in 2001. In September 2004, however, the project site was rezoned to IND, industrial, from the M1 Restricted zoning. An amendment to the Development Agreement is currently requested so that the existing IND zoning standards for the industrial mixed-use large-scale projects can be applied towards the current project. On the screen, we have photographs of the existing DreamWorks campus. Again, as you see, it has a variety of buildings that are clustered around courtyards and gardens. The architectural and landscape design of the campus is suggestive of an Italian Tuscan or Venetian village. There's a use of red, orange, and terracotta colors used throughout the campus. The current project description, and this would be Phase 2, consists of a six-story, 128,718-square-foot addition to the existing Lakeside Building. And we will have a site plan where I will show you that addition. There's also an extension of an existing parking garage to provide 265 more parking spaces for a total of 882. And an extension of the surface parking lot on the south side of the site adjacent to the Los Angeles River to connect with Flower Street through a secondary employee-only and fire access gate. This is the site plan I was just referring to. So you see before you, this would be where the arrow is going back and forth, would be Flower Street directly to the south of the triangular lot. Again, here is the LA River. The Lakeside Building is colored in light yellow, and you'll see the Lakeside Annex directly to the east of that, adjacent to Flower Street. You'll notice that the parking garage is located on the northerly portion of the triangle, as you see here where the arrow is going, and there's the extension just to the south. And then directly adjacent to the LA River is the extension of the existing surface parking. This particular site plan shows in greater detail the addition to the Lakeside Annex. And again, it has a varying setback from Flower Street, approximately four feet to 10 feet. It is a six-story, 128, approximately 128,000-square-foot addition to an existing 91,552-square-foot building. You see here before you, the north elevation is seen from Flower Street. And again, this is labeled as a six-story building, although it has five stories above ground, there is a subterranean basement. And so by the building code, it's technically six stories.
Can I ask you a question now?
Yes.
With this, what is the elevation of the ground surface and what is the elevation of the bottom of the subterranean parking? I can't see those numbers.
The numbers definitely are not readable, and they were provided actually in the packet, the plans that you received in your packet have an elevation.
Oh, neither.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you ask subterranean parking or the subterr-?
Oh.
Or the basement on the Lakeside Annex building? Forgive me, I'm, I'm assuming that you're referring to the Lakeside Annex building.
Lakeside Annex and the subterranean parking, the parking structure, both.
There is no, there is no subterranean parking.
On the parking, okay.
On the parking, there is no subterranean parking.
Okay, what's the elevation of that parking structure at grade? And then what is the elevation of this annex at grade? And what's the elevation of the subterranean parking?
Commissioner Barron, why don't we, in particular, this-
You can get that later if you want.
Yes, if you don't mind, because right now we're dealing only with the Lakeside Annex. It has five stories above grade, one story below grade. Now, would you like us to tell, to actually find out the, the depth of that basement level for the Lakeside Building?
I just need the elevations so I can do the math.
Okay, well, we can then go ahead and return. I believe the architect is looking into that. The photograph on the bottom shows the east elevation as seen from the LA River. And again, this is where Flower Street makes essentially a 90-degree turn, and this is the elevation that you would see as you make that turn heading north on Flower Street. The parking garage extension, is this, I believe, where you were referring to? It's an extension of an existing parking garage to provide 265 more parking spaces for a total of 882. You'll notice that there is a photograph of the south side of the existing parking garage that will solely be extended. There is a slight basement level which, no, I'm, I apologize, they're nodding, because now there's confusion. This parking garage does not have any basement level. It does not have a subterranean garage. It's at grade. Okay. And last but not least is the third part of the Phase 2 project, which consists of a surface parking lot extension. It also provides a cut-through secondary employee and fire access gate to Flower Street. And again, this is directly adjacent to the Lakeside Annex. The amendment to the Development Agreement, obviously, the original 1996 Development Agreement was based on the previous zoning of M1. It included also the following height restrictions of 65 feet above grade for structures, up to 85 feet for six architectural features, and up to 115 feet for one architectural feature. The proposed 1,280, oh, 128 square foot, 128,000-square-foot Lakeside Annex has a height of approximately 93 feet and six stories. And again, this is five above grade, one below, which exceeds the maximum allowed by the original 1996 Development Agreement. The amendment is requested to apply the IND zoning and industrial mixed-use large-scale project standards. The industrial mixed-use large-scale project, again, would allow this particular development or any development which qualifies for the industrial mixed-use large-scale project standards up to 10 stories or 175 feet above grade, whichever is less. Now, for a project to comply with- Now, for a project to comply with or to use the industrial mixed-use large-scale project, you would have to have a development project containing a minimum of five contiguous acres. This one has 13.3. It would have to be located within a redevelopment area, which in this particular case is a San Fernando Road corridor redevelopment area, controlled by a single landowner, which in this case it is, and developed as a unified project under a disposition and development agreement, which it obviously does and which is being amended today. Whenever a development agreement comes before the planning commission, you're required to make findings, that it be consistent with the general plan as well as the zoning. This particular amendment is consistent with the general plan in quite a number of various ways, some of which include that it reinforces Glendale's image and community identity within the Greater Los Angeles area metropolitan complex, that it provides expansion of desirable commercial-industrial uses adjacent to areas where such an expansion is in conformance with the goals of this plan, that it encourages more intensified development of industrial areas, that it encourages high-rise office use within or adjacent to regional commercial centers, that it provides expansion of revenue-producing industrial-commercial establishment within the parameters of other community goals. And again, this is in the San Fernando Road corridor redevelopment area. Compliance with the industrial zoning. Again, it meets the minimum lot area. There is no building area, but in this case, the existing lakeside building or existing full DreamWorks Animation campus has 331,000 square feet. What is proposed is 128,000 square feet for a total of approximately 460,000 square feet. Their development agreement allows them to go up to 495,000 square feet. There is no street front setback in the IND zone. They are proposing approximately nine feet for the lakeside annex. There is no interior setback. In this case, they are still proposing a 32-foot setback for the parking structure. Height limit. The height limit in the IND zone is 50 feet, but again, if a project complies with the large mixed-use project in the IND zone, they are allowed to go up to 175 feet or 10 stories. In this case, they are providing a structure or proposing a structure that's six stories and 93 feet in height. And there was a parking exception granted by the agency back in 1996 that had a parking requirement of two spaces for every 1,000 square feet. The parking structure will have 872. A total of surface parking, again, to the rear, would be 319 for an absolute total within the campus of 1,191 spaces, while only 921 spaces are required, so they are providing well above and beyond what is required by code. In 1996, in conjunction with a development agreement, the city council and agency approved a first addendum to the final program EIR for the San Fernando Road corridor redevelopment project plan. Again, the original program for the EIR San Fernando Road corridor was approved back in 1992. The first addendum analyzed the build-out of the DreamWorks Animation campus project. And again, it specifically addressed 495,000 square feet of building area, a parking structure, and associated facilities. A second addendum is now required to address the impacts of the Phase 2 project and the proposed amendment to the development agreement. The second addendum to the program EIR was prepared by PBS&J in March 2008 of this year. It addresses the designation of the DreamWorks campus as an industrial mixed-use large-scale project in the IND zoning district, as well as the modification of the height limit, the parking garage extension, the surface parking extension, and the secondary employee and emergency access road. The second addendum concluded the following: That the project does not represent a substantial change to the San Fernando Road corridor redevelopment plan, and that there was no new information or any substantial impact not previously analyzed or disclosed in the program EIR or in the first amendment or first addendum to the program EIR, which would require preparation of a subsequent or supplemental EIR. Second addendum details include traffic impacts, and this was in regards to the placement of the emergency access and service gate on Flower Street, and these mitigation measures would reduce the impact to less than significant. As you noted in your staff report, the two mitigation measures included that the secondary access gate shall have limited access and essentially would prohibit left turn-in, left turn-out, so only right turn-in, right turn-out turns would be permitted. The second mitigation measure requires that the project applicant shall be responsible for payment of fees to the city required to post appropriate signs as well as physical barriers to enforce these turning movements. An additional item that was studied was obviously the shade and shadow impacts, because you are going from essentially what was permitted as a 65-foot-high building up to a maximum permitted of 175. That shade and shadow analysis was included as part of the second addendum. Based on that study, it was deemed that determined to be less than significant. Lastly, the project would not increase the development's contribution to air quality or traffic impacts as previously identified in the program EIR. Those were the main items that were brought to the attention, and this particular project, because it was also studied in the first addendum in terms of the total build-out, would not be adding to that any more traffic or air quality impacts not previously analyzed. Per the government code, and again, you've gone through quite a number right now of development agreements previously for projects in the downtown specific plan. Many of the previous development agreements were specifically required for incentives or bonuses. Again, this is not the cases in the downtown area. This development agreement is solely addressing the DreamWorks and is an amendment to an existing approved development agreement. And so, again, even though it's already existing and approved, any amendments would require your view and recommendation to go then to city council. So your comments and motion will be presented to the city council and agency at a joint meeting on April 22, 2008, at which time the applicant will also be presenting the Stage 1 and Stage 2 final design submittal, the second addendum to the final program EIR, which you received in your packets, and the proposed first amendment to the development agreement. That concludes staff's brief presentation. There are a number of individuals. We have Alan Castillo from the redevelopment department. We have Gillian Van Miden from our legal counsel. We have Kirk Solomon representing the architect. We also have the applicant in the audience, and I believe a number of consultants that might address some of your more detailed questions. I would like to note at this time that Commissioner Ramirez sent me an email with regards to three questions pertaining, again, to the environmental review, which were answered by Alison Rondoni from PBS&J. Her answer with regards to those three questions was distributed to you at this meeting. I will allow her to actually present the answers as well. Other than that, staff has no additional comments, and we recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the first amendment to the development agreement and the second addendum to the program EIR. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission for staff at this time? Seeing none. I have one speaker card. It's Jeffrey Haber.
Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Haber from Paul Hastings in Los Angeles, representing DreamWorks Animation. I just want to echo the staff report and say a couple of additional things. First of all, we very much appreciate the opportunity to be back here in front of you with something we're very excited about, which is the second phase of our building project. As you probably know, in 1992, the city approved the San Fernando Road redevelopment project area and did a full EIR for that project. The DreamWorks campus, as you may know, in 1996 was the first major project under that redevelopment EIR and in that redevelopment area. And as you probably know, if you've driven out there lately, it was an incredible catalyst for development in the area, and it has been very successful for the city of Glendale and the redevelopment. That redevelopment area is really a great success for the city, and that was really started by the first phase of the DreamWorks project. In 1996, the agency and the council approved a 495,000-square-foot project to be built in one or more phases. The DreamWorks built the first phase of roughly 331,000 immediately, as was required by the original development agreement, and is currently vested without any further approvals by anybody to build the remainder of the 495,000 square feet. So the only thing that's really before this commission and then before the council is the distinction that we're trying to achieve with respect to the height. When the project was approved in 1996, we had a development agreement that had a height limit of 65 feet with a few exceptions for architectural features. Subsequent to that time, the city approved for this entire area the ability to go to the large-scale project height of 175 feet. So we're asking for an amendment to the development agreement to allow us to go up to that height. The building that's actually going to be before the agency and the council only goes to 93 feet, but we're just acting to be consistent with the zoning for other projects in the immediately surrounding area. I'm obviously happy to answer any questions that you may have. We've got the architects. We've got a number of consultants here for any specific questions that I can't answer. Just in response to Commissioner Ramirez's earlier questions of staff, the parking will entirely be on the surface or in a above-ground structure. There'll be no below-grade parking. And with respect to the annex building itself, there will be five floors above grade to a height of approximately 93 feet and one story below grade, approximately 13 feet six inches below grade of approximately 23,000 square feet.
I think I asked for the elevations. Any architect provide that?
The actual elevation? What's the...
That elevation?
You mean above sea-level elevations?
Yes, above sea-level elevation.
All right, we'll get that for you.
And the reason I want that is because I have some information regarding groundwater and other issues pertaining, and they're based on sea-level elevation.
Okay, we'll get that for you.
What to compare it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do we have any other questions?
I don't have any.
I have just a few questions.
Sure.
It's the trend, and I'm just curious knowing how progressive DreamWorks is. What lead certification level are you going for in the building?
What...Tony, what's our lead certification? Are we asking for a lead certification on this building?
We're going for lead, 75 maybe.
75?
Minimum certified, and maybe a...
Certified, okay. I don't think you can get to 75.
That's a lot of points.
Minimum certified and above if we can.
Some of those bonus points, yeah.
Super, is it?
Like superdelegates.
Okay. Another curiosity, and I'm stunned that you're over parking and to the tune of almost roughly 300 spaces. So you're spending an extra four or five million bucks on parking. Why so much more extra parking?
It has to do with what I think is another benefit for the city of Glendale. These are very well-paid employees and...
So they drive two cars to work?
Well, no, but they have larger...they have perhaps higher incomes than the square-footage allowances might otherwise indicate.
So the executives get two spots for their single car. That's what you're saying.
Well, no, but everybody has a car.
Okay. Go ahead. Are you thinking better of it?
No, and again...
And by the way, just to further answer your question, isn't really 5 million, because only 882 of those spaces will be in the structure. We're also parking some on the surface.
True. And that was noted. I think it was 1,100.
I was just looking at the 300 extra spaces.
Yeah, it's 300 extra spaces, give or take, but of most of those 300 are surface spaces.
All right, a million and a half or 2 million to park everybody. All right. Who owns the adjacent property where the shadows are going to fall across?
The shadows primarily go across Flower Street, and then I believe that Disney owns most of that. It's all, all of it is industrially-zoned land, but Disney owns almost all of the surrounding area around the DreamWorks triangle.
You guys aren't going to have a problem if they put up 175-foot structure and show you?
Well, they already have with the ABC-7 building. That's, it may not be 175, but as I understand it, well, none of that was developed at all except for sort of old tilt-up warehouse buildings when the city adopted the redevelopment area. DreamWorks came in, built this really quite beautiful campus, and we'd love to have you out there if you're interested. And then Disney came in and built its campus, including the ABC-7 building. And I believe that it was at the time that Disney was seeking approval for its development agreement and the ABC-7 building that the city adopted the IMU zoning and the allowance to go to 175 feet for projects that met the criteria.
And you actually bringing up the ABC site triggered something else for me. You have no plans for a nice lit billboard around, along the five like our dear friends at ABC have up?
No, our plans for...
Our heliport.
No, well, we already have a heliport, which, and as you may know, if you really want to know the interesting history of the site, this was a...I bought the site for them many years ago. This was owned by the city of Los Angeles and was used as an LAPD helicopter storage facility. So when DreamWorks did the original over-excavation of the property, they found, among other things, an airplane wing in the ground. But we've done both our Phase 1 and Phase 2 for this new development, and there are no toxics, nothing in the ground. The ground's stable.
And knowing interior designers, that wing is hung up in an office somewhere.
I'm sure somebody's got it.
Grabbing that and seizing the organic nature of it all. All right. That's all the questions I had at this time. Anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Haber?
Commissioner Ramirez, we've had confirmation that the elevation of the proposed basement floor is located at 445.5 feet above sea level, and that is indicated on the submitted elevation plans, just in very tiny print.
Better than my eyes could see, yeah. 445.5.
Correct.
And the ground is 13 feet above it? Somebody said 13.3?
No, and...
They have a basement level.
The basement level, that would be...
This is ground that you gave me?
This is basement level bottom.
So it's plus 13.5 to ground?
Plus 13.
Correct.
Okay.
The average elevation...
Don't confuse me now. 13, plus 13-point-something.
13.5?
Correct, because the ground floor is located at 459 feet.
Okay. So your, the ground surface is roughly 460.
Any concluding remarks from staff?
No, none.
Any further questions from commissioners?
For staff?
Yes.
Yeah, I can start, I guess. Let me see. In September of 2004, there was a zoning from M1 to IND.
Correct.
Industrial. Did that go before the planning commission?
It would have had to have gone before the planning commission, so yes. Any rezoning is required to go before the planning commission.
I must not have been here.
Regarding the...most of my questions are pertaining to the EIR, the addendum program EIR, and my concerns are whether or not that document is really adequate for the proposed annex and not so much the parking. Well, it affects the parking as well, the annex building, particularly the six-story building. And a lot of those questions I have pertain to the document that I submitted to staff. And I don't know if it's the appropriate time for the consultant to answer at this time, because I think I could probably have follow-up questions, or I could...I do have some questions for staff before we get into the consultant. And then, just out of curiosity, what, how many additional employees are going to be working at this facility, and how many additional...what's the traffic?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, whoever can answer. You're probably the best person.
Right. I actually don't know the answer to the number of additional employees that are part of this particular project, but remember what's before you. The project has already been approved for 495,000 square feet. That is vested. We could build it tomorrow. We're building fewer square feet than that, so the number of employees is actually fewer than we're entitled to build right now. The traffic study for the first addendum to the original program, actually, let's go back. The program EIR, which was approved, certified, vested, and is now unchallengeable because it wasn't litigated in 1992... it wasn't litigated in 1992, talked about several million square feet being developed and dealt with the traffic mitigations for all of those projects. When we did the first addendum to the EIR in 1996 as part of this project, we took into account the 495,000 square feet that were being requested and subsequently were approved as part of that project. So, this is merely a change in height. The project is no more intense. In fact, it's actually less intense than what we can build. We'll still have roughly 30,000 square feet remaining, which we can come in and presumably will come in with a third phase at some point down the road. And the number of employees, which were, you know, I'm not...I don't actually recall what we'd said in the first addendum, but it's not actually part of what we're requesting as part of this project. The only thing that we're requesting as part of this project is the increase in height.
Okay, so essentially, you're basically stating that the environmental impact of that, the employees and the vehicles and all the rest of it, has already been...it's behind the door then?
It's already been considered, correct. That's correct. I mean, the one thing, I should mention one other thing besides the height, which Viliya mentioned in the staff report, we are requesting an additional employee-only entrance. So, there's a slight shift, and a few of the cars will go out Flower, but the traffic departments requested a couple mitigations with respect to right turn in and right turn out for that.
Okay, and there are no street improvements proposed on Flower Street or anything?
It's putting in some signage to indicate a stop sign.
Other than that?
But other than that, no. We did do some traffic improvements as part of the original first addendum and when we mitigated for the 495,000 square feet.
Okay, and I think the rest of the questions, perhaps your consultant that responded to my letter can answer. I still have questions pertaining to that.
Sure, okay.
Technical questions pertaining to the geotechnical part, groundwater, the issues of seismic safety, and those kind of things. And I'm still, I would like actually a real clarification on the position of whether this document, addendum document, really responds to that, because it's been many, many years, and obviously the state of the art and the groundwater elevations change, they rise and go down, and other factors. You can address those issues, those three specific questions I had, and I remember they were for your information.
No, I have them.
You have them, okay.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, my name is Allison Rondonian. I'm the project manager that was in charge of having this addendum prepared. In response to Commissioner Ramirez's questions, we did submit a written response, and what I'd like to do is simply refer you back to those, the pages in the original SEQA documents that set forth the information that does respond to his questions. His first question was whether the site was within a federal superfund site, and he didn't see it addressed in the addendum. And the reason it was not addressed in the addendum is because nothing has changed that would trigger a new analysis. It has all been analyzed in the previous documents, both in the original EIR and in the first addendum, and those page references are in the written response that I provided to you.
So, you're basically stating that there is no changes in the result of the superfund site from the time the original report was conducted in whatever year that is.
What we're saying is that the project, as proposed, is not creating any additional impact because of that factor that was not previously analyzed.
I'm more concerned about now what the project impact will be on the environment. It's the other way around.
Well, correct, but within the...that's true both ways. You can look at it both ways, and it is addressed both ways in a SEQA document. But an addendum does not reestablish a baseline. It doesn't start over from the date it was prepared and necessarily look at conditions as they are today. SEQA require...does not require that an addendum shift a baseline, which was the previous analysis would have been the baseline at the time the NOP, the Notice of Preparation, was issued for the first addendum would represent the baseline for the specific development on the DreamWorks site. So, in that addendum, the all mitigation, the superfund site was acknowledged, the mitigation from the program EIR was incorporated, and the second addendum also incorporates all of that previous mitigation that carries forward and applies to this project as well.
Okay.
And that mitigation reduces any impact from the site being a previously designated superfund site to a less significant level.
I didn't review these reports. I didn't really have time.
And I should just point out as well that the entire...the superfund site doesn't have anything to do with the surface of the property. It's the groundwater in most of this area of the San Fernando Valley, throughout this entire area. And the...this site, in fact, as you may know, was prior to DreamWorks coming to the city of Los Angeles to buy it and coming to the city of Glendale to talk about moving its headquarters here, was actually going to be the site where the PRP group, the potentially respondent parties who had...who were determined by the EPA to have caused the groundwater contamination, were going to put the wastewater treatment plant. And so, we at DreamWorks worked with that group and with the city of Glendale to actually relocate that plant down the street a little bit. And so, in...as a matter of what's actually happened, putting aside the SEQA issue, the groundwater has been in the process of being treated for the last 10 or dozen years, and so it's actually better than it was...than what was analyzed in the 1992 EIR. But in fact, what was analyzed in the 1992 EIR is dispositive with respect to the SEQA analysis that's before you here tonight, because the project hasn't changed.
Right, I understand that. But the conditions have changed.
Well, the conditions have not changed with respect to the project.
State of the art has changed pertaining to health hazard, and I think you're talking about chromium 6, and there's other contaminants in the water. At any rate, I think you...you know, my concerns are that perhaps we need a better understanding of the physical hazards pertaining to the groundwater, the seismic hazards. It is in a state-designated liquefaction zone. There's no question about that. And that hasn't been addressed, so...
It has been addressed.
On the supplement. Maybe it's in these documents here, I have not seen it.
It is in the documents there, and that's what addenda do, and that's what the specific redevelopment project area program EIR set out to do, which was to set out a baseline under which any project of fewer than 500,000 square feet, of which this is one, could move forward and analyze the issues that were different from what was analyzed in the program EIR. And with respect to the liquefaction, for example, and the seismic, that was analyzed in the original redevelopment plan EIR. It was analyzed again in the first addendum and was determined at that time not to have any effect on this campus, because this particular campus is actually not in a particularly bad liquefaction zone. That's in the first addendum to the EIR that was done for the 495,000 square feet.
I disagree with that. It's on the record, state records that it is, so...
Okay. Well, the analysis was done, that analysis is dispositive. Nothing has changed from that project to this one. And under SEQA, if the project doesn't change with respect to a particular issue, it's not appropriate to be analyzed.
It's an issue of difference of opinion.
No, well, it's not a difference of opinion, that's actually the law. That's actually the law. And the third thing I'd point out is that separate and apart from any SEQA analysis, DreamWorks has done its own analysis of the liquefaction potential of this particular site, and that analysis, as Allison said in her memo back to you today, indicates that the liquefaction potential in the event of a seismic event in this area is 1/4 of an inch. That's it.
That doesn't make sense. Liquefaction potential, 1/4 of an inch?
The settlement, sorry.
You're talking about settlement.
The settlement, yeah, right.
But that's not related liquefaction. At any rate, what I'm concerned about is the Belmont case, you know, Bellevue or whatever it was, the school district problem, you know? And everybody said, "It's not a problem, it's not a problem." All of a sudden, it became a huge problem. I happen...I don't know if you happen to know, I used to be on the state mining geology board. I was in charge of the seismic safety program and this issue of the issuance of the liquefaction maps and the lateral spreading issues and all that. So, I'm very familiar with this area. Definitely, the whole region at the bend, so-called the narrowest bend of the LA River, is subject to liquefaction. It's documented, there's no question about it. So, anyway, what I...my feeling is I'm not going to support this addendum, because I feel that you needed a more substantial EIR. That's basically the bottom line. Because I totally disagree with what you're stating in the letter pertaining to specifically liquefaction, that geologic...it is in a identified liquefaction hazard zone. And until that is resolved, I'm not going to support it.
Well, I would like to read from the first addendum that discussed on page 23, Seismicity, that says, "Although additional investigation may need to be performed to obtain more precise information on liquefaction potential, once specific building layouts have been determined, preliminary indications are that the potential for liquefaction on the site is low." So, it does indicate that...
That contradicts the Dream...the Disney reports. Disney had...
Well, I have not seen the Disney reports, so I...
Said it was subject to, and they actually have maps that delineated and includes your area, so...
I can't speak to the Disney reports.
Yeah.
I do know that the applicants, soils specialists have also looked at the previous analysis and updated current, done current soils testing or whatever the investigation, and determined that the liquefaction potential was very low.
Well, Mr. Chair, I don't want to deliberate this any further. It's obviously a difference of opinion, and I'm just not going to support it, because that issue is so important, because it is either...it's very important. You either have a safe site or you don't have a safe site. At this point, you haven't proved to me that you have a safe site.
And with all due respect, we obviously are very concerned, as concerned as anybody in the city or the state, that we have a safe site. We've done the analysis, we will continue to do the analysis until we're convinced that we have a safe site. All the analysis that we've done thus far indicates that we do, and...but we will continue to do that all the way through the process.
I understand what you're saying.
I mean, our employees are going to be the same employees who get the great parking. We want them to be safe.
Absolutely, and that's what I want, too.
Right.
Does your soils engineer happen to be here?
No.
It was the one consultant you didn't...
Yeah, sorry. You only had room for 30 people, so... It's Danes &amp; Moore, though. It's, you know, well-respected geological.
Are there going to be new soil borings taken and the like, or you were lying?
We've taken new soil borings quite recently.
And I'm guessing, Mr. Mason, do you want to say something, or are you just going to talk in their ear?
Sorry, it was the geotechnologist. I'm sorry.
Oh, geotechnologists from Glendale?
Oh, those hacks? No, I'm joking.
Totally joking.
You're okay with the first name?
Right.
You think that Danes &amp; Moore did the Disney study and...
Oh, really? Well, that...then we'll have them look at their own study. But they've told us that...they've told us quite recently, I think, that they think that the settlement potential in the event of a seismic event, sorry, I misspoke earlier, is 1/4 of an inch.
And the other issue, lateral spreading, which is horizontal slippage into LA River. You know, the LA River is about 40 feet deep there.
Right, sure, no, I know.
And you're right against it.
No, we know, yeah, we know.
A little...
Although, as you know, the city's putting in its relocated sewer line is going right there, and the Paul Storm Jane, the county Storm Jane is right on the river.
Right, right. No, I think it's a beautiful campus, and I would love to see your building go up and everything. I just want to make sure it's safe.
Fair enough.
That's where I come from.
Fair enough, we do, too.
Yeah.
Excuse me, and if I may reiterate, that one of...a couple of the mitigation measures that are included from the program EIR is that they have to do complete soils and geotechnical reports by qualified soil scientists and geologists prior to project approval, and that it shall be subject to grading permit review of those soils reports as well. So, there are safeguards in place pursuant to the mitigation measures that were included in the program EIR.
But we can't do that before, so...
That are carried forward into the second addendum as well.
That's usually the case, but, you know, in our profession, the problem is that these reports sometimes come too late. The same thing in the city. City, we get the same problems in the city of Glendale. Most cities, when they deal with planning issues, they come too late. All of a sudden, you know, you can't build it, or you got problems that mitigate that you can't possibly economically, you know, follow up on, and many, many other issues. So, you know, issues, for example, you're going to put the building on piles, you're going to be drilling deep piles, you got different strata with different contamination zones, and you're going to spread the contamination if you're not careful, for example. Those are just simple issues.
Are these socketed caissons or friction?
Do we caisson?
Are you hitting bedrock?
No.
Okay.
It's in alluvium, so...
Well, it depends how deep they were.
Well, they're pretty deep. They have to be deep to notice for a building, a six-story building.
That's why I wondered if they were finding their way down.
They're going to be in the groundwater for sure. So, anyway, I think that's enough. That's all I have to say.
All right. Do you have any other...anything else?
Nothing else.
All right. Do you have anything?
I have no further comments.
All right, neither do I. Thank you. Any closing comments from staff?
None.
Anyone else eager to pipe in that we haven't heard from? All right. I'd like to entertain a motion then that's been prepared for us by staff, if you'd like to use that for the basis.
I would move that the Glendale Planning Commission recommend to the city council that we approve the First Amendment to the DreamWorks statutory development agreement and participation agreement in accordance with the motion provided by staff.
I'm suspecting that you're in no mood to second it based on previous conversations, so I'm going to pass the gavel.
All right.
And I will second that motion.
Second the motion, and we have roll call, please. Or any other comments?
Further discussion, seeing none. Come on.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ramirez?
No.
Commissioner Yarrow?
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye, on a vote of 2 to 1, the First Amendment to the DreamWorks Animation LLC has been recommended...what are we doing with this? Recommended approval to the Glendale Redevelopment Agency.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I've lost today's agenda, but I'm guessing that it's staff reports.
Would you like a copy?
There it is. Staff reports, is it?
Planning Department updates.
Planning Department updates.
Planning Department updates.
The only update we...the update we have right now...
Build a safe site, that's all I care for.
We will, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Talk to Danes &amp; Moore.
We will, we certainly will. I'm sorry, they weren't here.
I don't know. I'm just trying to...
Have they lost the form?
You would have lost the form.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's better this.
The only update we have is just to let you know that we are taping this meeting to put online. That was brought up by Mr. Torgerson at the last meeting, so we've received training on Granicus, and we're going to have this available online.
So, we belong to the universe now?
You've joined them.
Wow, all right. Anything else on updates? How's...what's our agenda for the next meeting look like?
Right now, we have two items. There's one appeal, and I believe there's two track maps.
All right, very good.
Is the appeal on Cascadia? Because we...I still have a packet.
No, it's Honolulu, isn't it? No, I'm sorry, it's Montrose.
Yeah, 2,800 Montrose. It was continued from two meetings ago.
Accessory sign.
A what?
It's an accessory sign.
Accessory sign on Montrose?